How you doing? A long time.
That's what he was telling me.
Didn't get a whole lot done, did it?
No, but those things are educational.
Oh, you bet they are.
Yeah.
That's it. That's why people like.
I have five o'clock.
Is it fine? Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm filling in for the chair. I'd like to call this meeting to order May 4th, 2022. Would you please stand and say the pledge in a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have an adoption of the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you. It has been moved by Ms. Egan, second by Mr. Fairchild that the agenda is adopted. All in favor? Any one opposed? Chair votes aye. Now we're going to count and administrate this report.
Good after or good evening, board members. I just have a few things to report here, some ongoings, goings-ons in the county. So one, he's not here, but a happiest of belated birthdays to Mr. O'Brien. His birthday was about a week and a half ago. So happy belated birthday to him. We have a new employee that started in the finance department. Ms. Donna Allen is the new purchasing officer. She started on April 25th. So like I said, certainly welcome having her on board. We want to congratulate Lieutenant Heard on receiving the unsung hero award from the Attorney General during Victims Rights Week. Lieutenant Heard received this award for his dedication in protecting children and investigating child abuse and child sexual exploitation cases. And a great job. He's a great asset to the county. And I know Lieutenant Heard had an email back basically saying, you know, you know, he certainly appreciates the kudos, but it was definitely a team effort to do the job that they do. And, you know, he certainly wanted to recognize all them, but certainly, you know, a great congratulations to Lieutenant Heard for his accolades. Coming up next week, we have the carnival at Pleasant Grove Park. So free entry and free parking. Rides are $1 per ticket or $15 for an armband. So the carnival will take place next Wednesday, May 11th through Saturday, May 14th. Times around here, Wednesday, Thursday from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m., Friday, 5:00 to 10:00 p.m., and then on Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And then 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. And again, I'm sure it'll be welcome to get some of the community members out in the park, out of Pleasant Grove Park and riding rides and have a good time. So we had the tire on here. Let's confirm. Sorry about this. We had the Earth Day Tire Drop Off Event was held last Saturday, April 23rd from 10:00 to noon. Patrons were lined up before staff arrived at 8:15. The first person in line was there at 7:30 a.m. Let me just get rid of this video. You can see we got Mr. Spitzer and Dylan there with Parks and Rec. And again, they were just one of many that were there to help do the trailer pickup. We had two 51-foot semi-trailers. Tires collected were roughly a little over 1,100 tires. And again, thanks to the following staff, Parks and Rec, Lynwood Anderson, Dylan Morris, Eric Armentraut, Fay Stewart, Melinda Payne, Aaron Spitzer. And then with Public Works, it was Jacob Lawrence, Shannon Race, James Sisson, and Anthony Tanner. And again, it was a hot, dirty, sweaty day, but we picked up a lot of tires.
Did you all have anyone that couldn't get their tires because we only had two trucks?
No, we actually, we actually had some leftover space and just to maximize some of the space, we ended up going to the landfill, to the convenience center and taking some of those tires. We'd normally have to pay to get rid of them. We just brought them over, brought the trailer over and loaded them in there as well, too. So now there was plenty of space and, you know, so some people figured a way to get as many tires in there as they could. So, but like I said, better to keep them in there than, than, you know, out of the rivers and on the side of the roads. And then May is National Foster Care Month. So currently there are 17 Flavanna County children in foster care. There are also 10 foster families approved through the Flavanna Social Services. Huge thank you to those families who selflessly give of themselves, make a difference. Anyone wanting more information or about being, being a foster care family can call Social Services at 434-842-8221. And then in addition, May is also National Adult Abuse Prevention Month. Adult Protective Services is a program of the Adult Protective Services Division at the Department of Aging and Rehabilitative Services. In state fiscal year 2021, there were over 39,000 reports of adult abuse, neglect, or exploitation. Fifty percent of those APS reports were substantiated. So anyone with reports of suspected abuse, neglect, or exploitation of adults, certainly please call. There's a 24-hour toll-free hotline at 888-832-3858. And then for May, Hurricane Preparedness Week is May 1st through the 7th. And again, this is just kind of a reminder for those that, you know, hurricane season will, you know, is a few months away, but, you know, now's the time that they recommend starting to stock up on your, you know, your personal hurricane risk plan, coming up with evacuation routes, reviewing and updating insurance policies and replenishing any supplies. So the hurricane season begins on June 1. Anyone wanting to learn more can go to www.knowa.gov. And just one other thing, so upcoming board meetings we have, so next Wednesday, we have a 7:00 p.m., I'm sorry, next Wednesday, May 18th, a couple Wednesdays from now, at 7:00 p.m. We have a regular meeting. One thing I wanted to get from the board is, and I know we got a few board members missing, we wanted to do a work session at 5:00 p.m. on that date. So we basically have all of the master water and sewer utilities master plan updates ready to go, which is going to also show, you know, rates, you know, some of the standards for who must hook up. And it's pretty much everything, water and sewer. So Duberry Engineers had completed our master plan update. So one, it gives the board a chance to, you know, in kind of a more, I don't want to say informal, but, you know, it gives them, it gives you a chance to ask our engineers some questions, which maybe we couldn't do normally during a regular meeting because there's lots of, lots of things to review from a water and sewer utility plan update. Would the board have any, you know, hesitations with entertaining a 5:00 p.m. work session prior to the 7:00 p.m. meeting?
I'm good.
I'm good. I'm good.
Okay, all right. And we'll certainly make Mr. O'Brien and Mr. Sheridan aware of that. And then also coming up, June 1, we have a 5:00 p.m. regular meeting. And then June 15th, we have a 7:00 p.m. regular meeting, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board has.
Do we have any questions from the report?
Not for me.
Okay. All right. If not, then we will go to public comments. If you have a comment, would you please step to the podium, give your name and address, and speak to the board? Anyone have any comments? Thank you. Ms. Perry?
Good evening, everybody. I'm Perry Johnson. I live at 229 Pine Lane in Fork Union. I'd just like to thank you for fully funding the school board's budget. It's remarkable. It's appreciated. Particularly, I appreciate you trusting us to make these decisions for our students and our taxpayers. And I just want to say again how much I appreciate the leadership of every one of you. Thanks so much.
Well, thanks to you two. And I've been wanting to say ever since the last time you stood in front of us and you kind of got interrupted and we went on other stuff, and you kind of gracefully stepped away. I felt like, oh my gosh, we were disrespectful to you.
Not at all, and I'll be back. Thank you.
Well, thank you. It was our pleasure to fully fund the school. We made history. I've been on the board 15 years, and I think this is the second time that I remember that we fully funded. You all have a good budget, and it was our pleasure to do that. Anyone else would like to speak? Anyone on call in? No? All right. So I will end the public comments. Now we have a public hearing.
Nope. No public hearing.
No public hearing. Okay, action matters.
Yep. Let's hear it. Board members, yeah, I'll certainly handle this one. So this is a Human Resource Department position reclassification. Presentation here really briefly. Um, so one, this position reclassification for the Human Resources Department is really just kind of recommended to reflect, you know, basically the current essential functions for the department, for the actual, specifically the position, for what I'm recommending for the Director of Human Resources as compared to the Human Resource Manager, which that position's kind of been there for many, many years. And certainly, the department has changed a lot in that timeframe. One, this position reclassification will reflect all the, you know, current duties and responsibilities that that position must go through, makes it comparable with other director positions within the county as well as it makes it consistent with the same types of, same type of position within other competing local government organizations within our surrounding job market. One, the job position, the position description has been updated to reflect all the actual duties and requirements of the existing position. Plus, you know, there's been some additions to the department as well, which there wasn't originally. There wasn't any staff under that position previously before. So for fiscal year '22, there would be some required funding of a little over $2,000, which I would recommend to come from fiscal year '22 Personnel Contingency Budget. And there's no action that the board has to take on that. That's just there if there's any changes. And then there would certainly be some changes over 13,000 for salary and benefits in fiscal year '23 with that to come from Personnel Contingency. And some of that would also be implemented from the comp study as well. I'm happy to answer. Any questions that the board has more specifically about this? Like I said, I listed in your package, you had kind of the prior HR manager position and the new one, the director position with the updated job responsibilities. And then like I said, kind of the red line, just kind of showing some of the differences. But like I said, I'm happy to answer any questions that the board has.
When you say from the contingency and funding for implementation on compensation study, will you explain more?
Yeah, I mean, so basically, so part of, part of as we go through and implement the comp study, I think there's going to be some funding that goes towards that, that would be applied to that just under the normal, under the normal realms of the existing position. But in addition to that, if there's more than would have been allocated to that amount, and since we're not done with the comp study, we don't know what those amounts are. Again, something like this could come from personnel contingency, or it would become from a combination of both to cover the difference.
Thank you.
And, you know, for instance, for this year, so we always budget for our policies, we have some contingency amounts for personnel contingency and BOs contingency that we have every year. And for this year, we haven't had to dip into the personnel contingency too much. So there is funding there to cover that.
So this position went from what classification to director?
It went from a Pay Band 21 to a Pay Band 24, which is in, which is in, which is consistent with other director positions. Again, from the comp study, you may see other positions kind of, you know, slowly adjust a little bit, too, once, as it looks at the market rates for other positions in the county. But that's based upon the current position descriptions. This is changing and reflecting what the current position is changing.
Okay, but the current position was director.
No, the current position is HR manager.
Okay, we just met. It was, okay, we've never had a direct.
No.
Okay.
And before, I don't think they ever had anyone full-time underneath.
Correct. And now.
Yeah, I know that. Yeah, yeah. I understand all that. I just was just knew that we hadn't had a director before.
Now apologize for being behind. We've had some interesting weather in the afternoon runs for our buses.
Yeah.
Trees falling in front of, falling behind them, they're going, oh, that's bad. Need some help. Oh.
Anyway, we're done, everybody?
I think, any other questions? All right. If we have no other questions, do we have a motion?
I move that the board supervisors approve reclassification of the position description for the Human Resources Manager, Pay Band 21, to the Director of Human Resources, Pay Band 24, with funding an amount of $2,114 for fiscal year '22 to come from the personnel contingency.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Fairchild, seconded by Ms. Ziegler. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion passes 401 with Mr. O'Brien being asked. All right. Next up is appointments, board commissions, and committee appointments. Go.
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board. So again, we had one slight change, and we're going to bring that back. We apologize for that. There was one application for the Library Board of Trustees. That was inadvertently omitted. There is, anyway, there was a little bit of administrative oversight on our part. So again, to be fair to all applicants, we're going to bring those ones back at the next meeting on May 18th. So this evening, the only ones for appointment is one Jot Board, Flavanna County Representative. There's just one individual that has submitted for the Monticello Area Community Action Agency, the Flavanna Representative. There are two individuals that have submitted for that one, that one slot. And then for Parks and Rec Advisory Board, for the youth rep, there's a reappointment of just one individual. Like I said, be happy to pull up any information that the board has or any questions.
Anyone?
It seems pretty clear on the Jot one, right?
Yeah.
There's one and there's one.
Yeah.
Yeah. Now, about the MA?
MACA.
MACA. Board.
Yeah. I would suggest Ryan Washington. He's been on it before, I think. Yeah.
Okay, we should be good. I apologize for that. Well, we'll say technology, or we'll call that operator. I didn't pay attention to the, what the warning was.
Remember, always blame Kate.
No, I'll blame myself. Yeah, so again, so for MACA, you've got the two representatives, Ryan Washington or Ed Harris. And I can pull up either one of them if you want.
You said they're both well-qualified.
It's very nice to have probably overqualified people buying for these positions. Any other comments? We have motion.
Do I? Okay. I move the board to supervise the following board commission and committee appointees. Joint Leslie Woodfall Haskins. Monticello Area Community Action, Ryan Washington, Parks Recreation Advisory Board Youth Representative, Matt Lynn Clark.
Like I said before, that's the great granddaughter of
Yeah.
Mr. Moore. The Morris room.
Yeah.
All righty, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion been made by Ms. Booker, seconded by Mr. Fairchild. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion passes 401. Now we'll move for presentations. C AARP Charter for a Livable Community. Ms. Keane?
Just letting you know if you want me to go to any additional slides, I'll be driving it from here.
No, I'll give you a break. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you all tonight. I think Ms. Harris shared with you a handout, so you can flip through it at your convenience. I am so glad that you wanted to hear a little bit more about the Charlottesville Area Alliance, which is working toward an age-friendly community. I'm usually up here as the CEO of Java, but tonight I'm here as the Chair of the Alliance. So I'll be focusing on that. We'd like to share with you what we've been doing and what we see in the horizon. So the annual report I gave you for last year gives you an idea of some of our focus. If you go to page four, and I apologize, I realize there aren't numbers on it, but there aren't too many pages either. So it's the one that has housing at the top. Part of the, we've become part of the Regional Housing Partnership. Our idea being that we don't want to be separate and trying to advocate, but we want to be a part of where the action is happening and help people remember to keep seniors in their mind. Because obviously, when you do things that are good for seniors, you're doing things that are good for the community. Several years ago, a consultant out of Richmond pointed out that many of the things that millennials want are the same things that seniors want. Matt Thornhill was saying that when you think about the needs, they're often the same. So if you're building a community that addresses those needs, then you're going to continue to have all ages find it as a great place to be. We're also going to be hosting an AARP webinar in the late summer on accessory dwelling units and missing middle housing. So they have brought in a consultant who's going to work specifically with us so that it can be tailored to meet the needs of our constituents and the networks that are seen as being part of the Alliance and part of AARP. So I would hope that would open it up to your staff and any of you that are interested. Then on the next page, you see there's a lot of goals for social engagement. They did a great survey last year. And two of them that they're specifically working on right now, as people are getting back out and being in person, is to train people on dementia-friendly, to try and help different retail outlets, like restaurants or libraries or places that people might go with someone who is in their group that might suffer some cognitive decline. So helping people understand the best way to share, show dignity, and help people participate. And the other one is the Buddy Program. And we're looking at trying to start it with Ollie and see from there. Because what we learned from the survey, and I suspect, again, this shows that it doesn't matter what age you are, people aren't real comfortable being all by themselves, walking in a room to a group. And so if you already have somebody there that you know, or that you know is going to welcome you and be there with you, it makes it a lot more likely that you might participate. And so we're finding that that's one of the simple and yet not-so-simple things to solve is that, and of course, as we get older, 25% of seniors in this region are living alone. So the odds are good that they're going to these activities by themselves. So how can we help with that Buddy Program? And then on the next page is transportation, an issue that I know is near and dear to everybody's heart and certainly of great concern. And again, we've been able to have a member of the Alliance be a non-voting member on the Regional Transit Partnership. And I know Hal Morgan is your member on that from Flavanna, and he's now joined the Alliance because you all have always participated with us. And what we're looking for now is to help you make that last step to become on the network of AARP. So again, that allows us a way to have a voice that's constantly reminding the transit that you've got to look at senior issues, too. And we are working with AARP to create a webinar also that's related to transportation. We also with AARP have been a part of their National Rural Hub, which I think would be particularly important for you all. We've got somebody from Nelson County who's attending, and it would be great to have somebody from Flavanna attend. They've broken the rules and let us send more than one person so that we can, again, explore things like volunteer ridership and hear what other rural areas are trying to do to work on transportation. And so that, I think, is really the benefit of moving beyond just being a partner in the Alliance, but going to becoming part of that network. On page seven, for those of you who haven't heard me talk about the Alliance before, you'll see it's a wonderful combination of about 30 agencies, which is really important as we look at all the elements that the AARP suggests about seniors. And that's that last page. It's the eight elements. And so as you look at that, we tried to find partners that would help us address each of those areas, or most of those areas. But obviously, we can't address all eight of them because we're all volunteers on this Board of Alliance. But we did do surveys, and these three were the top three that seniors said both they wanted addressed and that they cared most about. They would love to have all of them addressed, but at some point, which are the ones that were most near and dear to their heart? So I just wanted to, you know, thank you for addressing a lot of these elements in your comprehensive plan as you're going forward. You all led the way with your last comprehensive plan. You had more mention of adults and seniors in there than probably any other one I had. You all led the way with your last comprehensive plan. You had more mention of adults and seniors in there than probably any other one I had seen. So I hope that you continue to do that. And then again, by, you're off to a good start. A A R P just put out a livability index, and you had a index of 51, which puts you right in the middle of everybody in the country. And it showed that you have 19% of people over the age of 65 in your county, which is about what I think we've been talking about, and no big surprise there. That housing costs have gone up. I'm sure that's a shock for me to point out to you. That household transportation costs, this was interesting, is about 18,000 a year for people. And it's above the US median, which is 15,000. But again, given that people are probably driving from here into other places like Charlottesville or over to Louisa or Richmond for jobs, that would explain some of that higher cost for a household. People in this county have lower access to exercise. And I suspect that's based on how many, the way they judge it is based on gyms and things, meaning public or private. Whereas I know your Parks and Rec program is very strong for seniors, and with pickleball, at least I assume that's continuing. That was, so I'm not sure that number is completely right. Civic involvement is really high. Cultural involvement is lower, and I think that's a struggle in a rural county. So I would just ask that you consider the idea that A A R P Network is something that you would join. There's no cost to it. We've been very lucky that the Alliance has been identified as a key city, which is what's giving us access to these webinars and would give you access to that. And just access to more resources and ideas from other people across the country who are struggling to solve these same problems. And I think we bring it to you as something that's a benefit, and I hope you would consider at no cost for going ahead. We almost got to that step two years ago, and then COVID hit, and we kind of got focused on everything. So it's kind of fun to be here in front of you and know that part of what that means is we're ready to move on, and hopefully this will be part of what you choose to do. So I believe Ms. Harris has an example of the the application, and luckily, they've said because you're part of the Alliance, that we can basically just use our goals for your goals to just get the application in, and they'll just move it forward. So they're ready to approve it if you're ready to decide to apply. Are there any questions about the Alliance or about the A A R P Network? That I can, oh, and I forgot one last thing. I wanted to say thank you very much for last week, or two weeks ago, when you signed the proclamation for May is better hearing and speaking. Goodness, Old Americans Month. I really appreciate your proclamation of that and making that something that, again, you choose to honor in your county. So thank you for doing that. Sorry, we didn't have somebody here to receive it.
Okay.
Thank you so very much. Any questions?
No, I know that Curtis, you all see Curtis Putnam is on the transportation, and he's representing our partnership for Aging River.
He was representing you all for a long time, and he chose that because of personal things, he felt that it was harder for him to participate any longer. So I believe it was about six months ago, I want to say this here, that he resigned. And so about two months ago, when we were trying to find somebody who could participate with a transportation background, Mr. Morgan was very happy to join us in that capacity. So he's on our transportation committee as well as just coming to our partnership meetings.
Right. And is Ron Locher, is he on housing?
Yes. Oh, yes. Yes, he is. He is on our, and that's right, he's part of your Fluvana Louisa Housing Foundation.
For Vannis.
Yes.
And then if the board wants staff to move forward when working with Ms. Keen for submitting the application, and then what we would do then too is looks like Ms. Harris has a draft resolution in here too that we bring forward at the next meeting on consent, which is basically just, you know, authorizing the membership into the A A R P Network.
So does this mean that Fluvana County is, would be joining A A R P?
Well, not A A R P, the Network for Livable Communities. So they have a website that's specific to livable communities. And on there, if you went and looked, Almarl County is listed and Charlottesville City is listed, and then Alexandria Arlington Roanoke. So it would, it would put you on the national list, but then it will open you up to having access to some of these additional resources because you would be one of the cities, counties on their network. So it's not an actual A A R P. I mean, I guess it is because they are the World Health Organization Agent for Livable Communities in the United States. It's a World Health Organization program.
I enjoyed seeing Mr. Shoemaker in the softball. Yeah, they informed me two years ago that I was now old enough to come up there and play Tuesday and Thursday mornings. And I said, well, as soon as I retire, I'll start coming on Tuesdays, Thursdays mornings.
Shoemaker and Tom Thane.
And Frank.
Yeah, it's always a little disconcerting to be informed that you now get to get discounts, right?
It did not bother me one bit when I walked up to my first golf tournament. I could walk forward 50 yards to the goal team. Didn't bother me one bit. I looked back and laughed.
There you go.
All right.
I got a couple of questions.
Yeah.
So the map localities of the Thomas Jefferson Planting District, is that just a map that was used to help understand a district here? This isn't a part of T J P D C in any way.
No, it's not. Sorry. That's, yeah, that's just, the Alliance covers the same.
The same footprint.
Yes, thank you. Yeah.
And then in the Social Participation Action Plan.
Yes.
Under action steps descriptions, one item is support the African-American community in developing social engagement programs for at-risk seniors. And I wondered why African-American are singled out compared to Hispanic and white and others?
At this point, because, and it's not, it probably shouldn't be singled out like that, but when we look at our whole region, there's only 3% Hispanic, 1% Other, and about 16% African-American. So was the largest minority group that seemed to also overlap with lower socioeconomic, which puts them technically more at risk and more open to inequities. Not that the others aren't, but if you're going to try and do some outreach, often we have found the language becomes a tougher barrier to overcome with looking like a Hispanic outreach. And so not that we aren't trying to do it, but it means finding people who can help us with speaking Spanish.
So what about white areas that are especially strong and at risk?
And those, yeah, no, and I think certainly that shouldn't look like we're ignoring that because I think part of the issue is that that is a group that is being addressed by many of the agencies and just making sure that what we're saying is we want the agencies to make sure that they're looking at all the areas of inequity, so not just the lower socioeconomic or living alone. Or because 11% of the people in our region are at poverty level, which is about 11,000 a year for one person. So we know that there are people out there that we need to be addressing. And between all of those agencies, much of our work does address that. We just want to make sure that we're not missing areas that might not be aware of the services. So we want to make sure that we're getting the word out everywhere.
I'm concerned if we say we're going to participate in something, and we say that we're going to participate in something that singles out, that directly says it's going to target services, for lack of a better way, to particular groups other than others. So like I think of Southwest Virginia, where I've spent a lot of time down there. And boy, when I talk about some poor people, and so many of them white, I can't imagine a document down there that says that it's going to particularly target white people.
Well, and that's not A A R P's goals. Those were based on the surveys that we did in our region. And again, it's not meant to, and A, and our alliance isn't actually so much delivering as advocating. So it's just making sure that we're looking at are all the areas doing what they can. So yeah, no, I completely understand, and we can certainly look at rewriting that goal because it probably shouldn't have been quite so specific, and yet I think it was in an effort to make sure that that didn't get lost when we looked at who was getting services and maybe even who knew about them. I mean, for a minute, putting on my Java hat, I know that sometimes we're finding that there are times when we have a very good cross-section of all racial, ethnic diverse groups, and sometimes we don't. And so how do we do the outreach to make sure that those groups are being represented? I know the Health Department had a hard time making sure African-Americans were getting access to the vaccine, for instance. Whereas actually in Charlottesville, in the urban ring of Almarl, the Hispanic group had a very high turnout for the vaccine. And I think it's because there's a physician there who does a lot of outreach, and they trusted him, and they got the vaccine. So I think some of it came from looking at where service is being delivered and where might there be gaps? And so we were looking at gaps, not saying that that was the only thing, but saying if some of it's already being done, then we're trying to make sure we step up to the next level. Yes, thank you.
The Hispanic community is the fastest growing that we have moving into Fluvana County.
Yes, you all do have a much higher number.
Going.
Mm-hmm.
Oh.
You and Nelson both have a much higher number than maybe in the central part. Yeah.
Yeah, being, being an African-American, when you say developing social engagement programs, I think that
I'm sorry.
needs to be explained because a lot of the African-Americans, I know they live, African-Americans live in different pockets. And their, their social engagement is used, if you don't go to church, you don't have any social engagement. It often bothers me when I see statistics that says it's affecting African-Americans. Just yesterday, I was reading, and it said that the COVID was affecting Black children more than anybody else. We have more diabetes. We have more heart conditions. We, everything, it's a, it's on about 12% of us in the United States of America. It's not very many of us. But that is, some of that is factual. Now, what Chris is talking about, I think social engagement programs is a thing that's kind of puzzling. What do you mean? They don't go out anywhere. They don't socialize. There's no amenities in their community. I don't, yeah, we need to probably look at that and, and see what does that set up? One new community social program for adverse American, Americans. African-Americans do things, younger group. I mean, they go, they go on cruises, they do anything anybody else does. If we're talking about the elderly people.
Yes.
Then that's a different.
And that is who this is aimed at, and you're right.
Yeah.
And I think it came from the survey. So it's telling me that whoever answered our survey identified themselves as a group that would like.
Like to have more, more potty and more.
That's right.
I think the thing you're saying that we want to include everyone, we don't want to picture one group more than anyone else.
Sure, but if a group of whites said we particularly would like to have these services, that we would never see white, the word white on this piece of paper.
Because, well, you know, that's a big conversation.
Yeah.
You and I, I mean, I'd love to have that conversation.
It is, but we're, and I would too.
You're right, because you, it's usually black folks. It's usually the black population. And you'll see it, and when you read it, you will see that. And I'm glad you questioned, but there's facts behind it. And that's when we need to look at the facts behind it. Why are you saying that? What, what's the statistics behind it?
In Fluvana, with our senior programs, we lost the biggest advocate we had this past year.
Yeah.
Ms. Keen, she knew exactly who else was.
Yeah.
And she made sure.
And our churches now are not.
She reached out to everyone. But that's, that's the biggest thing.
Yeah.
You know, just make sure we're reaching out to everyone.
Yes. Yes.
Hispanic community as well, because like I said, I mean.
And we can, that's our goal, so we can rewrite them, or we can have subsets under them so that we are a little clearer about what that means.
But if it's facts behind it, and it's true, then you don't have to apologize.
No.
As long as we can always say it, no matter what subset is.
Yes.
And I just can't imagine, again, go down to Wise County.
We never turn seniors away. I mean, certainly Java, again, but I mean, I'm saying.
Vocalized targeting people.
Yes, but as Java, I think we try very hard to meet those needs. I think places like the Center are trying harder to do, to be more diverse. When they look at their population, they probably don't have as much membership that is anything but white. And so how, you know, they're part of this too, so how can they better increase something in an area they see a gap in? And I think that's part of what we're looking at is some of the programs in the agencies don't have as much exposure. And so what can, you know, how can we help them? So some are already addressing everything, and then others need help.
And we're not, and we're talking about Fluvana, Louisa, Charles, and we're not talking about stuff.
Green, Nelson, yeah.
This area.
Yeah, this wasn't a goal written just for Fluvana. This was our, yeah.
This, this is government endorsing something that speaks to race. And, and there is a precedence that we all do think more globally than just where we live. And so to think about Southwest, Southern West Virginia, there is a precedence there of how we treat and talk about people. And, and I'm okay with talking about subsets of people, as long as we can talk about all subsets of people. And I'm saying, I can't imagine there ever being a document written that a government signs off on the state of Virginia that says you're going to particularly target white people.
I think, I think you need to do some research.
I would love to see it.
I think you will.
I'd like to say something. I, I'm really not comfortable with joining this. I don't know enough about it at this time, what the purpose is. And I, I'd like to do more research on A A R P. I don't know, I mean, there's, they've been around a long time, but I'm not sure what they do. And I'm not comfortable doing this tonight.
So.
Yeah, thank you. So we've gone back.
Yeah, this, this is not, this was just a presentation to bring, to bring the topic forward. And again, it was more for, does the board want staff to bring the resolution forward to take action on it? And we can do that, and then, you know, we could work with Ms. Keen to get more information. If there's more information that the board wants, in addition to what was in the board package. Or you can probably go to the website too and probably look up.
Make sure you look at livable community, because that's, that's what you would be joining this, that network, not.
And also, I'd like to say that I was involved in a diversity and inclusion program for Java that we went through every department at Java, Java, and looked at equity, diversity, talking about disadvantage, men and gender, every department to see where were the gaps? Where is it where we can strengthen certain areas? Because when you strengthen those, your organization is strong. They're more productive. So that report was an eye-opener for me to be able to sit down and work through an organization and see where the strengths and the weaknesses were. And we pointed out, maybe we need to have more people with maybe some disabilities working for us.
Yeah, because one's not enough.
We have one, right.
Me, which I always forget when I'm listing all the diversity areas and I'm sitting in my wheelchair. Me, which I always forget when I'm listing all the diversity areas and I'm sitting in my wheelchair. And I'm like, wait a minute, there's another one. Oh, yeah, disability.
Yeah.
I commend you for what you do and you all do wonderful things.
And, and Java is separate from the alliance. I just happen to wear two hats. So thank you. For Java, I thank you.
I, I would, I agree with Trish. But as you said, there's nothing, there's no action.
Yeah, there's no action tonight. I mean, again, we can bring this back before the board and we can try and, like I said, work with Ms. Keen to get some more data if the board or our website, if the board wants to look more into it. Like I said, just, just need some direction on if you want to come back for the board for action or just, or if you want to get some information in the meantime.
I'm not willing to, to vote for this because I think Fluvana is very different from Albemarle and from Charlottesville. And oftentimes we join things like this and we're overlooked. And I'm tired of that. I don't like it.
And, and I agree with you. And that's why I think we've tried very hard to make sure, for instance, that Curtis has been actually even on our steering committee because we very much see that the other counties are different and we don't want this to be Charlottesville centric. We're working hard to make sure by joining like the rural hub and things that we are looking at solutions that go beyond Charlottesville and Albemarle. So I am very sensitive to what you're saying and and I think that can be a problem. And we've really tried very hard to try and find ways to make sure when the survey went out, it went out to all the counties. When we did focus groups, we did them in the counties, not just in Charlottesville city. So I, I know what you're saying and I can understand that. And I understand if you all choose not to, but I wanted to bring this opportunity forward because I do think it's a chance to try and learn from some other regions or cities or counties. If there are solutions that we aren't thinking about, and they may not fit Fluvana, but they may be things that we haven't heard about because they're being done in Oklahoma or.
I mean, if you took, and I'd say it this way, but looking at the statements you're talking about, if you just took African American out of it and just put senior community. To me, that's what we're doing at the ARC Hall at the Community Center in Fort Union at.
Everdame Baptist Church.
Everdame Baptist and Down in Scottsdale. BFW, it's BFW. To me, that would be, that's where we're trying to do for at-risk seniors.
Yeah, because that's why we provide the food there for the programs that Faith does.
Yeah, and they're highly segregated, our, our groups that we have here in Fluvana. We have a lot of conversation to have about this and that's what we need to do. When I look in Alliance, when I look at Alliance, it says, working together for an age-friendly community. And same thing about black, white, an age-friendly community. That's yours mission. So I know, you know.
If a subsection of that talked about targeting white people, would you, would you be comfortable with that?
Yeah, if they need it. If there's a need, yes, indeed. I don't have any diversity.
Yeah, like I said, I think if you just said that one, those two words are replaced with just with seniors.
Let's tell it, yeah, let's get some statistics behind it. Let's tell it like it is. If it is, then it is. But if we're not going to do anything about it, let's leave it alone. Don't put it in there if it's not going to be some kind of solution. And I've been, you know, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Another thing, this talks about housing. I really don't want Fluvana to look like Charlottesville. I've been here 40 years. Charlottesville used to be pretty talented. And it's not.
Well, and, and we don't do, we just help advocate. So if you have things that you're looking at in your comp plan, how can we help bring ideas? Again, ideas for rural communities, not ideas from Charlottesville. Ideas from other counties that have tried to balance, how do you continue to have affordable housing? How do you help people age in place? How do they not have to move from their home? Those sorts of things because it, the point isn't to, I don't want to live, I don't live in Charlottesville. Don't put that on the minutes. But I, you know, I, so I know what you're saying. And so, yeah, this isn't meant to find one imprint that we're going to put everywhere. It's meant to find how do we work with you and bring resources and ideas to you? And then how do you choose to say, you know, that's, that could be a great idea or that doesn't work for us? I know that there was some issues about bathrooms on the downtown mall. And I heard that Roanoke had solved those. So I put the people in Roanoke together with the people in Charlottesville so that they might get an idea that they hadn't thought of. That's the idea. How do we network these things? So it's not to impose by any means.
And I don't take it that way at all. I do think it's, as Trish is saying, it's good to hear these things. Hopefully other rural communities are saying similar because I would say the average rural county around Charlottesville, I had circled one section under Housing Action Plan. The, the very first line says land use regulation to increase density. I mean, that's not terribly positive thing to talk about for a lot of people.
Right, no. And, and that should have behind it Charlottesville because that's specifically a goal that Charlottesville is working on. Exactly.
Thank you.
Yeah. So we can clean up some of our goals to make them sound a little better.
You were talking about Fairfax at one point.
Yeah.
I was speaking with Fairfax.
Yeah, you know.
And a penny in Fluvana is 339,000, 330 something. A guy, a penny in Fairfax is 21 million or something ridiculous like that.
Yeah, yeah. Now, I have to tell you, when I sit on the state calls, I'm not finding that Arlington and Alexandria's solutions for things or where they are with them in any way. They don't even apply to Charlottesville or, or Albemarle. But Roanoke has some interesting ideas and, you know, and so.
Roanoke.
Yeah.
You got those ones to do the same size.
Yeah, yeah. And, and that's it. You know, I sit in, I listen. If I hear something, I go back and I say, hey.
Thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you. All right. Have a good evening.
So just to clarify, does the board just want me to not bring it back? Just give you some more links for information or just, just so I've got clear directions on how, how you want me to move forward with this?
I wouldn't want you to bring it back until we're better educated.
Okay.
That's, I don't have a problem. It's so.
I, I think that would be too soon.
Okay.
When you talk about bringing it to the end of this month.
Well, like I said, I can bring it back in June if, if the board wants.
We're looking for in between.
Well, let's probably move back to August.
Okay.
How are we going to get that education moving forward?
Well, could that be a topic for doing our retreat?
We're going to get to a point where we're going to be doing more than my retreat.
Yeah, it's going to be, if, if, I mean, there's, there's a lot of things in there. I mean, I think, you know, without either, either one, maybe attending some of the meetings that Ms. Keen's going to or just reading, reading on some of the livable communities and maybe some, some of what the topics are. I mean, that's about, without having her here, you know, go through this presentation, you know, in, in much greater detail. I'm, I'm not sure how much more information we could, we could get out there. But like I said, just, I'm just, like I said, if, if August is a timeframe, I can, I can, I can try and get the board some links and information from Ms. Keen in the meantime. And then we can, you know, talk about it and bring it back up.
Let's get some more links, talk about it.
There's a section in here that says social engagement team. There was a facilitator from University of Virginia. Maybe we need to see what survey she made and why she came up because it seemed like they have one little, that section has some questions to see. Where, what evidence did you have to be able to point out African Americans with social engagement? See where it came from, get some facts behind it.
I'm in part just open to us having that time to discuss how we do one-on-one or whatever.
Yeah.
And whatever information you'd be.
Yeah, we, we'll, we'll see what we can get from the board, get some additional links.
All right, thank you. But with, we'll hit and move on with the Aqua Virginia update. John J. Albock, the second. President of Aqua Virginia.
Gave my introduction. I appreciate that. So I'll introduce the, my, my two partners I have with me, Josh Harris, our environmental compliance manager, and Terry Blankenship, our state engineer. And really appreciate this opportunity to come and speak with the board. And I know we'll have some questions and, and we'll have some answers. And I just really said, just again, just really appreciate this opportunity. And before we even get started, I'll make a suggestion to Eric that we look on a calendar and do this again someday. I think that'll be very beneficial for, for all of us to make this the recurring kind of conversation. And, and get the working relationship developed with the board of supervisors that I have currently with the planning and zoning department, the committees there. So Eric, if you'll go to the next slide. And we'll try to move through this as quickly as possible without a total rush. Because I think we've got some highlights that we really like to, to share and we can focus in on, on some aspects. And we're going to do this in a team approach. So we, we've identified some slides and we're going to bounce back and forth around the mic a little bit. And we'll hope that won't be too disruptive. So Aqua Virginia, we've been in Virginia since 2003. We're part of Essential Utilities headquartered out of Branmore, Pennsylvania. It's been around for 135 years. Essential Utilities was named on a date that we'll all remember, March 16th, 2020. We've got to date the pandemic was identified and declared. That's the date we bought People's Natural Gas headquartered out of Pittsburgh. And we renamed and rebranded ourselves from Aqua America to Essential Utilities. And ever since that day, we've heard about essential utility workers and they are essential. And we've got a great team in Virginia. So here recently, Newsweek, we've been identified as 371 out of 500 most responsible companies. We go to the next one, Eric. Thank you. Just, just Virginia at a glance real quick. We're in 37 counties, serving around 34,000 connections, about 100,000 people. A lot of wells, 370 plus, 192 water systems. We're the largest owner of public water systems in Virginia. Not the largest systems, but we have the most quantity there as a regulated community. We have eight wastewater plants and then we have one wastewater collection system also. 55 employees and a lot of pipe in the ground. So the next, the next slide is just our, our bios real quick. And I'm just going to skip right over top of that. Jay Divers is listed here. Jay's well-known in the, in the community as our area supervisor. He's usually the first one making calls and addressing customers and concerns and is out and about with his team. So on the next slide, we wanted to hit on a couple of things that I think have come up through conversations with the planning commission and, and recent projects you all have looked at over, over the last year. Excuse me. And these are, these are some items that have come up in the conversations. And so I'd, so I'd share a little bit about us. Our water system, we are regulated by the Virginia Department of Health out of Lexington Engineering Field Office in Lexington, Virginia, just, just across the mountain. I spent about 28 years working for the Lexington office. And then I spent four years as the director of the office of drinking water. So one time I regulated Aqua Virginia and now I'm a part of the company. Permit 1.38 MGD. You can see how much DEQ has assigned that we can withdraw from the Ravanna River. You can see our average production, a little over half a million gallons a day. So we're approximately 42% of our production capacity. So we have plenty of water capacity for, for growth. I know that's been a concern.
So, so I can ask a question while we're.
I'd appreciate that. Yes, sir.
Okay, because that, so the VDH permit, although DEQ withdrawal permit is as large as it is, the max you could, you could pull out is the VDH 1.38, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
That, that's our, that's our treatment capacity.
Okay.
So we, we can't treat more than that.
Oh, so if your plant was to
Expand.
Expand, I see.
I've got, I've got a, a drought flow within the river. And, and that's, that's the amount there, the two, two and a half million that we could withdraw and not have any adverse environmental impacts on, on the river. But I'm limited by the treatment plant capacity. Storage there, filtration, sedimentation, those type things to the, to the 1.38.
And when you say not have any adverse effects, like, what was it, 2019 or so when we had such a drought, 18 or 19?
Right.
Is that true during a period like that when the water is, when the river is so low?
Yes, sir. From my, from my own experience working in the Chandoa Valley when I was working, planning District Six. Harrisonburg's withdrawal limitations were established around 1988 with the drought at that time. And what was the amount that could produced with that drought that would not have an environmental detriment? So a lot of it actually goes back into the late 80s for that time period. And DEQ is constantly looking at that as, as other withdrawals happen along the water sheds. It's a pretty strenuous process.
Yeah.
And, and it needs to be. So at the wastewater plant, we're, we're just about three quarters of an MGD, a little bit higher is our, our monthly design flow that we have there. And our wastewater flow is about 658,000 gallons a day or 6.658 million gallons a day. So an important number to look at there is we're running about 85% of our capacity at that facility right now. Now, now Terry will talk about a 95% reopeners. That's part of our permit. If we reach 95%, then DEQ will work with us and we provide them an action plan on how we're going to expand our hydraulic capacity at the wastewater plant. One of the things I want to point out is if you look at our average daily water production and our average daily wastewater flow, they're, they're pretty close. You're never going to get them exact, you're never going to get the exact amount of wastewater coming in that you, you put out. And the higher numbers due to what we call INI, inflow and infiltration. That's water that's running in from the surface through manholes or underground into, into a cracked pipe or, or a joint in the pipe that is separated. So over the years, and this is one of the other slides I'll, we'll talk about, we've done a lot of work to replace manholes, replace lift stations and line the pipe with a cast-in-place concrete product to seal those pipes up and prevent the excess rainwater, stormwater from coming into the system. Which also prevents it from helping it from coming out during the overflow situation. So that, that extends, as we continue that INI reduction work, which is ongoing and will be, that extends the, the life of our current wastewater plant and its capacity to continue to serve. Here recently with all the work we've done, we've also started looking, we camera the lines to, to see where the cracks or slippage in the joint is, that sort of thing. And we can see where everybody's house plumbing comes in to the sewer line. So a lot of the recent work now has gone back in and putting sleeves where our line and the house joint come together because that's been identified as a leakage point right there. And so we're continually working this problem. Wastewater compliance, Terry will, will talk about that on one of his slides along with Josh. Our operations, we're not manned 24 hours a day and we, we don't need to be. We're in compliance with the state regulations on this. But just for your awareness, we're, we're typically operating the water plant around 10 to 12 hours a day. It's not, the water plant is not running when it's not manned. And that's a key discussion I'll have later on. The wastewater plant operates 24 hours a day. And it's typically minimum with eight hours of manning. And that's in accordance with our permitting arrangements. So I mentioned we're members of a technical review committee. Terry typically sits in on those. I join in on them and we, we talk about the, the zoning requests, whether it's for a body shop or a, one of them the other month was for a storage building unit and in an office. And whether or not we had the capacity to serve it. And of course, we, we discussed about the large developments, colonial circle and village gardens and those things. We were looking at each one of those in cooperation with that committee. And I think we've identified and have really cemented good working relationships with Douglas Miles, Andy Willis and Chief Ritchie. He holds us accountable on the fire flow. And I say that in a very friendly way. The county. Yes, absolutely. And, and that's what we want to do. So working with him, he, he explains a lot to us, working through county planning and, and building. We identify what the fire flows are for, for a certain type. We identify what the fire flows are for, for a certain type of development. You know, when we were looking at the senior center and the impact in Village Gardens, it had a higher fire flow requirement than say the residential sections did. So all that had to go into the conversations with our modeling effort and with the developers to work with that. And of course, reason I brought these numbers up, we're also looking very hard at our water capacity. And our wastewater capacity with these build outs and these developments are being proposed. While that's done through system modeling, we're looking at pressure zone evaluations. And I have a follow on slide to talk about that a little bit. But we're looking for system impact and impact on the development. And how are we going to provide the flows for normal daily pressures that we need, the fire flows. But more importantly to me is without impact to my current customers. And the last page we have will be about future upgrades, where we're also highlighting some of the recent ones we've accomplished. Josh.
Hello, everyone. So we are highly regulated. We work with both federal and state supremacy agencies. So in Virginia, we have the Office of Drinking Water and the Department of Environmental Quality. And given our footprint across Virginia, we're working with multiple regional offices within each agency. On a monthly basis, we're submitting our operational data and then any monitoring results as required as well. We also work with the State Corporation Commission, since we're regulating utility, so we fostered a great working relationship there also. So this is the, an award we received for innovation on budget in two thousand and nineteen. And the next slide will detail what led to us receiving that award. So this was an in-house project that we designed and executed at our Lake Monticello wastewater treatment plant. We deferred a plant upgrade. So this project costs two hundred thousand dollars compared to an upgrade that would have cost eight and a half million dollars. With this plant upgrade that we did, we improved our treatment efficiency at the plant. So we reduced our nutrient loading to the Ravenna River, which in turn reduces our loading to the Chesapeake Bay. We've reduced our operating expenses as well. You can see the nutrient credits, how much those decreased. Our energy and then chemicals. And I'd like to highlight that all these savings are passed on to the customers as well. By deferring that plant upgrade that helped with our rates as well.
I'll just jump in a minute. Sorry, Josh. It's meant I love to do it. Just to add on a little bit of that, the, the savings on this is recurring year in and year out. So it wasn't a one time deal for us. We had two one hundred horsepower blowers that were running twenty four hours a day. We now run one of those and it runs for a little while, it shuts off and then the other one turns off. So it's an alternating sequence. If we need more air, we can do both. So that's how we, we saved on, on the energy costs going forward. That also saves on the expense costs on the, on the maintenance, the operation and maintenance of those blowers. And extends their life and also delays a future capital. With that, about ninety five percent of this project was completed in-house labor. Our operations manager at the time did all the engineering design on it. He and Terry Blankenship submitted it to the Department of Environmental Quality for approvals. We did hire a specialty fabricator out of Charlottesville who knew how to cut and weld stainless steel. And that is an art. And so we were not able to accomplish that. That's a specialty item. Everything else is done in-house. Beneath this basin, there's a lot of aeration piping. Dan and his team were in the bottom of the basin, gluing that pipe together, taking the old stuff out and hanging on, hanging back on purpose. So it's there again. That could have been something that we would have contracted out, but that would have raised the costs and the expenses. And it would have been less beneficial to everybody.
Can you say, tell it improved, under improved treatment performance? Eighty five percent production in fluent T N and then seventy five in T P. Can you just, maybe I missed it earlier. What is T N and what's T P?
Total nitrogen and total phosphorus.
Okay.
We, we were purchasing nutrient credits because our plant was not able to remove the amount of nitrogen and phosphorus that. The Chesapeake Bay Act required us to do. So there, there were other facilities, Virginia contributing that are in the bay watershed. That were removing excess beyond what they were asked to.
I see.
And that gets, they go on a credit market. So we were buying those credits.
I see.
To offset what we couldn't do. So now that we are capable of accomplishing this. We've actually sold credits on the secondary market that we don't need. And that comes in and offsets our operation maintenance expenses, which is another.
That's the hundred and thirty five thousand.
That, that was the nutrient credit that we quit paying. And what we don't have on here is the ten or fifteen thousand or so that we've actually picked up selling secondary. So it's just, it's just a project that keep giving back economically for everybody involved.
Members of the board, as John indicated, my name is Terry Blankenship and I'm a state engineer. And I'd like to address the wastewater treatment plant and where it stands now and how it's complied over the years. In the past years, from two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and twenty one, looking at our discharge monitoring reports, which are submitted to D E Q. We did have one excursion on C B O D and that occurred in December of two thousand and eighteen. Yeah, during two thousand and twenty, we exceeded our design flow of that facility of point seven five million gallons a day. Three consecutive months. And that is a true statement. During that timeframe. You have to note that we received about almost twenty three inches of rain during that quarter. I believe in Virginia, the annual, annual rainfall is about forty four inches. So we hit half of that in three months. So we really, the impact is, as we believe and we continue to believe, is attributed to I N I or inflow infiltration. Once we, once we exceeded that three months, we had to report to D E Q. We had to prepare an operating plan. And when it occurs, you have some options here. D E Q will look at those options. They'll look at what your flow is and they'll look at what you're discharging, your primary constituents, whether it be T S S, C B O D. Well, the major factor here was what we were putting out in pounds. As you may think contaminants, it was purely wastewater flow. So what do you do? Do you expand the plant at that point in time or do you take care of the problem? We chose to try to take care of the problem and push off when we have to expand the plant. So exceeding three months in a row, in all practicality, is not a major issue. It's not a permit violation by any stretch. Looking at, I think there was some, earlier in the year. An evaluation of what we were doing. This information came from the Echo Online Report, E P A. And has twenty sixteen through twenty twenty ones. What it has there in the left column of each year, total pounds reported. Now that's, those pounds are the pounds of T S S and C B O D that we actually discharged on that year. And the maximum allowable, as you can see, that's a much higher number, that's the maximum amount that we can discharge. And what that's based on, when we report T S S and C B O D is really two factors. One being on a weekly average and the other one being on a monthly average. And the monthly average is really more stringent. So they, they take that monthly average multiplied by our design flow times eight point three four and you get pounds. And then they, they take that and round it up to whatever the annual amount would be. So if you look at twenty fifteen, T S S. We discharged around fifteen thousand, a little over fifteen thousand pounds per year. We were allowed to discharge seventy thousand, eight hundred and so. So we are below the threshold or the utilization rate. We were actually averaging anywhere from ten to twenty to twenty two percent of what we're allowed to discharge. If we were always exceeding our level, we would be in trouble. D E Q would be writing us N O Vs left and right. And there would be no opportunity for us to say, look, we're going to, we're going to control the wastewater flow. And that's it. We're not going to expand the plant. That's all we're going to do right now. But if we exceeded, they would say that's, that's a no go for you. You do, you're in a position where you have to, to expand the plant.
Let me ask you, were you aware of or familiar with something changing in the report? In the way that Echo showed it somewhere around the time or just after the Village Garden subdivision?
I am not aware. We, we just at the beginning of the meeting, we were talking about that, how, how the, the report in Echo. Or, or the EPA site was showing one thing and it was a legit report. And then literally a week later, the EPA site, it's looking at the same thing, we're showing something different and showing, showing this information. So again, that's.
You're not sure how to happen. So you were aware.
When Eric brought that to my attention, I went on the site. Hard to do with a, with a mobile device, but there's other states out, it indicated like West Virginia. I think the state of Washington were having problems with the reporting of data. And whether that played a role, I don't know.
Okay. And that, that's a federal database and we're not involved in it.
Yeah, they, they pulled their information from D E Q.
We report our, our information to D E Q and then it's pulled from there to there. So.
Yeah, yeah. And, and when you look at that data, there's, there's a lot of discrepancies as well. You can look at the data even for us and it'll list number of bypasses. Three or whatever for Lake Monticello. That's not true. We have no, we have no way of bypassing that plant. We, we make it in a situation where temporarily we'll shut the aeration system off with high flows. Allow the solids to settle and then come back on again. And we, we report that. We, it's, but it's not a, you know, it's not a bypass. It's how we term that as unusual discharge. That's it.
Oh, what I'm sorry.
Unusual discharge. Okay, so you didn't. Not everything was operating at that time, but Echo has no way to differentiate that.
But they may think that's a bypass, but, but D E Q would want us to do exactly what Terry said in those situations. If you lose your solids in the plant, it's the biomass, it's the food that treats the waste, the turtle coming in. If you lose that. You don't have a pump plant.
Right.
And they would rather see that state and the plant go out into the, into the river. But they know what's going to be a momentary short lived.
Yeah.
Type situation with heavy storm events and a lot of pollution.
And again, you could see with, with the flows that, I mean, when it rains and it rains for a long duration. Inch, one day, two inches the next, it really impacts us because the static head of the water over those pipes are pushing. And any leak you can find is going to go that way. And that's why we, last year, we had a major program to attack the I N I issue. Because again, that's the factor that's controlling this. And we have the same program for this year as well. So we're, I mean, we're, we're doing everything we can. Most of the activities last year was where are the problems? You can't just go out and just repair everything. It's not economical and doesn't benefit anyone. So we try to characterize where the bad sections are and then we attack it. So.
So we, we have a line, a pipeline contractor that we use prison construction as our, as our main contractor. And through flow monitoring and studies, we, we can go to sort of a watershed area, you know. Large, you know, ten block area or something and we'll look at on a macro size, what kind of flows coming in. And then we, we look at that throughout the process, throughout our, our coverage area. And say, okay, this macro area and that macro are our biggest contributor to flow. Now let's go to a micro level in that area and see where we're really getting the flow in from. So we can prioritize.
And again, just as I stated earlier, as far as exceeding our flows. This is just an excerpt from our permit itself. So if you look at that, when it comes to flow, there's either no, no limit on it or it's not applicable. They, we, we know we have a point seven five M G D plant. D E Q knows it as well. And when we report our flows to them. We are required, if we, if we exceed those flows for three, ninety five percent of the flow for three consecutive months. Within thirty days of that event, we write them a letter and we say, this has happened to us. And again, they know it. Within, I believe it's ninety days after that, we have to prepare a plan of action. What are you going to do about this? And that's where we indicated to them, the best thing that we can do is to control the flow the best we can. And if you think about it, if we expanded the plant, we still got that flow we've got to contend with. So we're, we're treating extraneous water in effect. You have to go after the problem first. And again, if we were exceeding our constituents. They may not let us go that way, but they didn't have a problem with it whatsoever. And we write them progress reports and tell them exactly what we're doing. Is it every quarter or every six months? Yeah.
And it's a very practical aspect too. That's stormwater that we're pumping through lift stations. Within Lake Monticello, we're paying electricity for, we can wear and tear our pumps. It's stormwater that's coming into the wastewater plant. We'll put narration and energy treating. If we can get that out of there, then we're not spending that kind of O and M dollar to treat stormwater. So that keeps those expenses down also. It's benefits to everybody.
Now John said that when you look at the water that's going out in the system versus what we receive at the treatment plant. He's correct when he said it's never going to match up. Theoretically, you would say, yes, it is. What goes out to the customer comes back to us. But this chart just illustrates that the finished water that, that we actually produce. In the blue versus what we discharge in the red. And you can see there's, there's about a hundred thousand gallon gap there. Now what's that attributed to? And that's I N I. So, you know, we, if we can get our I N I down and will we ever get it down to what we're putting out, it'll never happen. And we're not the only ones that have I N I issues. I would say probably ninety five percent of the plants out there have the same issue. It's just, it's a real problem. And it's particularly a problem when you have an order type system that we have. So we do everything that we can possibly do to make those numbers come together, if you will. Will there be a time that we have to expand? Yes, it will happen. But when that does happen, it's not a, you know, some, some I think are concerned. You're getting very, very close. What are you going to do? What are you going to do? Well, when that happens and, and we negotiate with D E Q and that negotiation is, if they say you have to expand the plant. We look at how long does it take to actually construct that plant due to studies? And we agree on a timeframe. Then we operate our consent order during that time. There's no, no penalty associated with that, but they give us time to do that. So it's, you know, hitting eighty five percent, it's high, but it's not disastrous by any stretch.
And I think this chart's interesting to me also because if you look at, at twenty and twenty one, which I call the COVID years. You, you can see the blue line going up. We, we have a lot of residents within the lake that were working from home. And you can see the wastewater went up and then dropping down. To me, that's showing, yeah, we were getting a lot more water production out there. But with that dropping off, it's also showing to me that our I N I work that we've been doing has been benefited.
We got a lot of things coming into our plant for COVID masks, you name it. And really creating some problems in our pump stations. But one of the things that I think is mentioned a little later on, and, and John mentioned, we do watch our pump stations. And we do have an existing system and we're upgrading that so that we can look from watershed to watershed, what's coming down. And try to backtrack that a little bit. And then sometimes it's boots on the ground, popping manhole covers. Do you see something here? Is it overflowing? Whatever. We do have miles and miles of pipe out there. And it's, it's hard to keep up with. But I will tell you, when we do have an event, we report it. And Lake Monticello, they have people out there looking too. And we appreciate, we want to know when there's a problem. It helps us.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, this might be a odd question, but I used to live in Brooklyn. And people in Brooklyn were not allowed to have garbage disposers. Actually, all of New York City, because it was overwhelming to the sewer problem to the.
Anything. The problem we have, I mean, we have a lot of problems. Anything, the problem we have, I mean, we have a lot of problems with whatever being flushed down. The big problem that we have is oil and grease. Is what? Oil and grease, or just oils. Cooking oils. Uh, we have grinder pump stations out in the system. We'll pull that pump out of the can and it is nothing but grease. And it, it creates a problem obviously for us. Yeah.
We've got close to a thousand grinder pumps.
Yeah.
That, that we maintain. So we've got five thousand plus wastewater connections. So that's. You know, twenty percent of our, our wastewater customers. Those, those are what drives up a lot of our operation and maintenance and capital costs.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I have heard from Lake Monticello customer. They'll say. They tell us that our bill is so high because we, we have too much grease going in the system.
No.
That's, that's, that is interpretation of a lot of, you know, because some customers have. I've heard it maybe two weeks ago and I'm trying to. Say, you know, I didn't think, I don't know how, where they're getting it from. They must be getting it from somebody.
Well, it's gotta be the same to Lake. Which you should do is, and I'm on, I live in the country.
Right.
I'm not, I'm not even on an aqua system. Okay. If they weren't available, I would take it. But any, any cooking oils where, whatever, you can put it in a, in a coffee can or whatever and dispose of it that way. My wife does that. My wife does all the cooking. If I cooked, I'd probably put it down because I'm lazy.
Yeah.
Okay. But I, I think the deal is, it, it's not that people are lazy. Uh, it, it's just that it's a convenient way of, of disposal. Uh, and they don't, you don't necessarily think about it. It's, it's sort of like. Out of sight, out of mind now, but I, we really encourage people to not do that. It doesn't necessarily. Increase the cost out there, however, it does take a wear and tear on grinder pumps. It's like cost.
There's an indirect cost.
There's an indirect cost.
From that. We're not, we're not charging based on the amount of oil we need to cover, but there is an indirect cost. That is borne by everybody within the community, whether they have a grinder pump or not. So. You know, when they're packed in grease and in the, in the vault, you know, it's a lot of effort to get those out. And, and, and repairs go up. So one of the things we've been talking about and looking forward to, hope to try to do this in the next six months. Is to hold a community meeting within Lake Monticello somewhere. Uh, have our, have our pump vendor Commonwealth Engineering come in. They have a cutaway demonstration grinder pump model that'll show people what's inside, but how's it work? Um, we're going to collect pictures of the things that we find in grinder pumps. And within the vaults. Um, so you know, it'll be a little bit of a graphic warning. With that, okay, anything, anything that can is flushable. Will show up in there. And here's my public service announcement for everybody, either on the lake system or on your own system or your own home. Flushable wipes are flushable. They do not decompose.
That's right.
Okay. And we, early on in COVID, everybody was going to the flushable wipes and we couldn't find toilet paper.
Yeah.
We were burning pumps up because the flushable wipes got down in around the impeller. It drew too many amps and they burned up. So we had to retrofit the influence line into the, into the lift station to remove those wipes. Create more of a labor demand, but we were able to save our pumps. They do flush. They are correctly advertised. But they're the worst thing you could possibly ever do to our system or your personal homes.
All right. Here's a, here's a question I've had this for a while. I'm not sure how much longer you have, but, um. Going back to your hundred thousand, it's a hundred and seventeen thousand. Or, uh, that you have available. How much is average house per day? Flow wise to the treatment plant? Yes, sir. I looked at that at one time and I was close to about a hundred and twenty-five gallons per day.
Around a hundred and fifty, hundred and twenty.
Somewhere around there.
Oh, because like I said, you know, we know that we have roughly. How many are across from my main gate?
Uh, let's call it one twenty-five maybe.
I was gonna say, I said one fifty.
Yeah, I guess between.
Three hundred up the new one, not counting the commercial.
Yep.
It's three fourteen, I think is the number that we have. So I mean, and then you got the fifty over it. Broken island. So I mean, we've already got a lot more demand coming at you and that's what scares me. The seven seventy-five and you're looking at a hundred and seventeen thousand available mill and that just keeps getting that number.
It, it does. It certainly does. And the other thing is that when you look at it. Uh, even now trending, there's a lot more efficient fixtures in the home. As far as the amount of water that's out of us, you know, the whole deal, but when you look at it. It's a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five. It's not the two fifty the EPA says, okay. But it is, it, the flows that come are really demographic in nature. Uh, so, and not only do we have to look at that, but we look at our pump stations because we want to make sure that we also cover peak. Lives. Um, you know, if, if you're watching a Super Bowl game and, uh, at halftime. You know, the water tower goes down because everybody's taking a break there, you know, we have to compensate that.
Yeah. You know, the, the most concerns we, that I hear, yes, we are generous, the costs of the wardens and sewage. As you add more and more customers, does that cost ever go down because you have more customers?
I'm, I'm gonna just say no.
No.
Okay, but what I, I think what I've expressed here several times is that we are looking very hard at controlling. Our operation and maintenance expenses because that is a huge piece of the cost. So as, as we continue to implement cost-saving measures, like the innovative wastewater plant upgrade. The INI work cut back on the, on paying the power bill. Um, Dominion and Southern Virginia may not like that as much, but we, we cut back on the power bill. Um, we cut back on chemical usage, all those things. All that then goes into the calculations to the future rate increases. Um, you know, and, and from two thousand fourteen to two thousand twenty, we didn't have any rate increases at Lake Monticello. We had a rate case in two thousand seventeen that we came out zero increase across Commonwealth. Uh, that we were the first public utility to give back money. From that rate case to our customers from the, the Trump Tax Cut and Jobs Act. That was filed right after we filed our case. We could have waited until our next rate case. And then returned it like some, some other utilities and begin to did, but I made the decision, you know, latterly to just. Locking increases out. Why take the increase for a couple of years and then pay it back with interest? That just didn't make sense to me. Uh, so we, we did that. So. Rates do not go down. Our, our cell phone plans don't go down. Our power bills don't go down. I'll mention gasoline.
So does it, so does that just mean that you'll with, I understand it's a for-profit business. Does that just mean that with the added capacity to the infrastructure you already have, that your margins go up?
Our, our, we are limited by the state corporation commission to earn nine point three percent. We cannot earn more than nine point three percent of our, our, our rate base, our investment piece.
So.
So no, margins don't go up.
You see the natural question though of.
Sure.
Typically people build the infrastructure, then the more business they bring to it. The more profit that comes from it because they've already invested.
We're only allowed to make so much profit and that's nine point three percent of the investment from the state corporation commission. I, just because I've got more out there, I can't make ten, eleven, twelve percent.
So if you've got more people you're charging.
Right.
Say a subdivision comes on that has three hundred homes.
Yes. That's spreading, that, that, that goes into the denominator of the calculations. So we're spreading those costs out against more people. Which reduces the amount of increase in current customers. So it's actually beneficial from a rate making standpoint and a customer rate impact.
Okay, Josh.
So, uh, in our Lake Monticello wastewater collection system. We have approximately one hundred places where the collection system crosses either a stream or a ditch. And these crossings can either be underground or some of them are exposed. So they're, they're subjected to environmental stressors. So annually we have, uh, field service reps inspect every one of these crossings. When we do these inspections, we're looking for debris accumulation, uh, condition of the crossing, crossing if it's exposed. And we're also looking at upstream and downstream manholes to make sure that everything is in place and those are, uh, not, in not, uh, not in need of repair as well. Uh, if we do identify a crossing that looks like it, it may become a potential issue, uh, we would be proactive. Uh, so for example, if we have a pipe that's spanning across the creek and it's got debris accumulated on it. We're going to remove that so that the next high flow event doesn't contribute to that and that unnecessary stress to the pipe. And, uh, if we have a, a connection that looks like it's about to fail, we would address that. Um, when we're in the field as well. So we've taken a proactive approach to have boots on the ground, inspecting our collection system annually. And we're also summarizing this data to DEQ as well, uh, you know, being transparent, keeping them in the loop and showing them our good faith towards being good stewards.
All right.
Yeah, one of, one of the things that we're doing as well, uh, and we, we've tried to, to replace one pump station, maybe two pump stations a year. And the left one is a, is an older type pump station. Uh, to be honest, you can't get parts for anymore. It's an old Impo Cornell station. Uh, we can replace motors and what have you and we can do work on the panels and keep everything going. But we're replacing everything with standardized pumps, Gorman Rupp. Where possible, if, if we're down in a COVID area, we'll use submersible pumps. So we minimize noises being generated. If it's not an issue, the pumps are above grade, which makes it easier on maintenance for us. But we're trying to standardize everything that we have out there. And to be honest with you, I've looked at the old pumps from an operating standpoint, looked at the pump curves. And they're horrible. They, they should never have been put in there to begin with, to tell you the truth, but. Uh, we, we design these things so they, they operate at their most efficient point.
And there's how many of these in Lake Monticello, be it the old or the new type?
How many pump stations?
Yeah.
Oh gosh.
That's okay.
No, and somebody told me the other day and I forgot. But there, there's quite a few. I mean, it's probably what forty-eight, forty-eight or something? It's in the forties.
Yeah, both combined.
Uh, pump, forty-eight pump stations on the sewer line itself, yes. And, uh, the majority of the big ones are this older type. And so we're, what we do is if we, if we find ourselves in the situation where we're seeing more maintenance activities take place. That's what we'll go after. Also is it structurally sound? That's, if it's not, we may only go after.
I'm, I'm sorry, I just had so many questions and this is a big deal for our area. And one of the things that you got us to talk about, having you all come is asking Eric if he knew. So I grew up at Lake Monticello, so I've been seeing these, you know, since I was a kid and fishing all around them and all them. You have that network of, call it forty-eight. And you've got the sewer station. Uh, you know, the plant.
Lift stations.
Is that all running along the, the roadways and pumping eventually making it, is any of it running under the lake? I mean, I just not, I have no visual for how it gets there, about what that spider looks like.
Well, they're all pretty much interconnected one way or the other. You know, when you go up, when you go downhill, it goes to a pump station, it'll lift back up again. That's the only way you can do it. So. Generally they go from one pump station to the next. Uh, and then sometimes we have a pump station being served by two others, if you will. But it's a long lethal run anyway. Uh, if we could have everything flow by gravity, we would love it. Because no expense, you know, but it just can't happen.
When it's going from one pump station to the next, where is that pipe? Is, is it? Where's that pipe running? How's it?
Uh, most of the pipes, most of the pipes themselves are off the side of the road.
Okay.
Um, now there are, yes, just obviously you have to, to go from one side of the shoulder to the other. And when we do that, you know, that come a little bit of disruption with the road activities. Most of them are down the line though.
Can these pump states, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, one question you asked, do any of them run under the lake?
No.
And these pump stations with. So everything comes out of the homes and goes to these, correct?
Every, every, everything coming out of the homes goes, it's a lateral and it goes into our main line. So that line could be pressurized by other pumps or maybe strictly a gravity line going to another pump station. So some of them are pressurized, some are not. But everything follows the main line. Most of our lines are about eighty inches in diameter and, um. Again, we try to avoid having to put it in the road or whatever. So we have an easy access if there is a problem.
So what are the pump stations doing?
They're, they're pumping it from the homes, getting it to the treatment.
We have two, two different systems out there. We, we've got home pump stations, which are grinder pumps.
Yeah.
Okay. So that's, that's actually referred to as a low pressure system. And so they're there because the property is either low and it can't get up to our, to our sewer. So you gotta get it up there somehow. So they'll pump into a force main, which, which is low pressure.
Yeah.
And then if you're sitting on top of the hill, flows by gravity to us, which, which is good. Uh, but you know, when you got the terrain that we have out here, I mean, it is up and down. So it depends on where you live.
So it goes through.
This is a mega version of a grinder pump.
Yeah. So the grinder pumps. It's, it's really, it's really a, it's a positive displacement pump.
Okay.
Okay. So some cases you have to have them, some cases you don't. But regardless, we have our own pump stations because at some point in time, we're setting down low. We gotta get it back over that hill.
And why virtually every one of these. Is it not near the road? It's down the gravel drive down there, the water at the end of the code. Is there a relevance to it being down near the, the?
Near the water? Uh.
Would be from a gravity, gravity standpoint from if the houses are up higher, it's moving down.
Like if you get into the bottom where these are and that gravel drive is off to your right. You're already in the bottom and every one of them runs to the end of the code, not everyone, but I'm saying.
And I've, I've seen a lot of like that. You, it's, it's right against the water almost. Okay. But I, the only thing I can think of, they were trying to take advantage of gravity flow to some point. And then we would pump it from there. It's, it's, it wouldn't be an ideal thing. Okay. Um. And, and there are a lot, you know, inheriting the system. We, we try to compensate with the best that we can, but rerouting everything, uh, becomes problematic.
Yeah.
Really does. Thank you.
Josh. All right. So, uh, regarding our Lake Monticello Water Treatment Plant. We've received a, uh, Virginia Optimization Program Award for seventeen years consecutively. Um, up until two thousand nineteen, uh, we received the bronze award and for the last two years, we have received the silver award. And mentioned here, there, there are stringent qualifications to receive these awards. Uh, I just wanted to name a couple of them. For filtration, we have to maintain a filtered water turbidity of less than zero point three into use one hundred percent of the time. And less than zero point one into use ninety-five percent of the time. Um, this is looking at a year's worth of data at a time. For backwash, the filtered water turbidity has to be less than zero point one into use ninety-five percent of the time. Um, after a filter is placed back in the service after a backwash cycle. Um, and the significance there is that with a lot of backwash processes. Um, there's a turbidity spike that's associated with placing that filter back into service. So our operations are, um, running very well there and, uh, obviously the seventeen years in a row says a lot about us receiving that award. So, uh, this is the phase three directors award that we received as part of the treatment plant optimization program. It's a, a voluntary program focused on treatment optimization and water quality. So we submitted operational data and a self-assessment to be reviewed by our peers. And, uh, the result of that was this award. So we're also very proud of this award as well.
That, that's tears across the time. The Office of EPA, Association of State Lake and Water Administrators, American Water Works Association. This and the Virginia Voluntary Program. We're, we're doing it because it's the right thing to do. We want to make the best quality water we can. And in doing it, we are going beyond the minimum requirements of the Commonwealth Virginia Waterworks Regulations and the Safe Water. We're, we're treating it to a final quality that they're labeled standard requires.
Okay. So this next slide is in regards to disinfection byproducts and the improvements we've made. So disinfection byproducts are formed whenever chlorine is added to water with organic matter. Um, the reaction causes these two byproducts, total trihalomethanes and total halo acetic acids. Um, at Lake Monticello, the halo acidic acid operational evaluation level exceeded the, uh, MCL for two quarters in a row. And, uh, after that happened, um, let me back up. The OEL is actually meant to. And after that happened, let me back up, the OEL is actually meant to allow waterworks to take action to prevent a potential violation. And so after the second OEL was above the MCL, we took action by working with our corporate environmental group. Working with multiple labs and then doing some process sampling and troubleshooting at the water treatment plant. And by doing so, we discovered that simply adjusting the addition of chemicals in our treatment process destabilized the organic matter, improved our removal efficiency and allowed us to reduce these halo acidic acid formation out in the distribution system. So the graph really shows where we made our improvement to the process in the first quarter of two thousand eighteen. And the highest halo acidic acid OEL from then on, they remained well below the MCL. Another proactive approach to us in our water quality improvement. A couple of approaches that some waterworks may take when they have disinfection byproduct issues is to play the, the average game. So compliance is based on a quarterly average. The other approach some folks may take is to do flushing. And for us, we took the approach of really digging into the details and seeing how we could improve our process for our customers.
Okay, water system hydraulic modeling. I, I wish they had this computerized when I was taking my undergraduate work. Cause we did it with pencil and paper. It was rather extra, rather heavy duty to get to this point. Now it is such, it's a couple of keystrokes for our modeler to answer our questions for us and it's fantastic. So this, this is a, this is an excerpt of a model. I, I think it was from the area of Village Gardens when we were looking at the, the senior living facility there. Or the, where that new version was being considered a few months ago. The developer contacted us, we, we have a, an engineer in, in Pennsylvania at our, at our corporate headquarters. That's a hydraulic modeler. They have our, our GIS mapping of, of the entire distribution system here in their computers. And we sat down with her on it, on a video conference, Terry and I, we went through different scenarios. We had the demands that were going to be developed from the, the facility, the, you know, the potential facility there. You know, how many gallons a day was going to be used? We had the fire flow requirements that came from the county. And what, what were those needs for, you know, how many gallons a minute per hour, how many hours and what was the pressures and that sort of thing? And we started looking at it and, and I'll say playing with the model because you're throwing assumptions in and you're changing data points to see what it does. And so in doing that, we did it for that, we're doing it for, for others also. From a growth standpoint, but we, we looked at what's the minimum pressure that we need to maintain within the Lake Monachal Water System? At any given time, under normal daily demand or under a maximum daily demand. And so a maximum daily demand is when you had your normal water flow going on and you're fighting a fire. So we put that into the model. The Commonwealth of Virginia's Waterworks Regulation says that we have to maintain twenty PSI at each customer's connection. Now to me, twenty PSI again is a, is a minimum building code. You can't go below it. You can go above it. So for the modeling, I set thirty PSI. Little bit of factor of safety and I don't want to push to twenty in the modeling. It's too important. We evaluated that again and then we turned off the water plant feed in the model. Because mentioned early on, we're running ten to twelve hours a day right now, basically like one and a half shifts. We're not running twenty-four hours a day. So it's not an accurate model if we had all the storage tanks in the system contributing to this and the demand and the water plant flowing. What happens if the fires at ten o'clock at night and the water plant's not on? So we ran that model. And we are, then we can, we can obtain how many gallons per minute that we can reliably provide for say two hours. And then how much needs to be provided by a future developer to augment that? And basically what we're doing then is we're looking at creating a separate pressure zone to serve that new, that new development. To meet the rest of the fire flow requirements. So we provide a portion of it and the developer, you know, future developer in their design of the system, which we would, we would work with them on. It's gonna have to, as I create a pressure zone, that's gonna be installing a, a storage tank and a set of booster pumps that will turn on and provide the fire flows that are, are necessary. And so the storage tank will provide the volume that is needed.
So, so like in the case of the Bill Jokes, the one here. So there's nobody working at night, the fire happens.
Right.
The storage tanks have contained enough water and the pumps have enough pressure to get to the development. What is needed if there's a fire?
Up to a certain point and then they, we would need onsite storage at that development with a set of pumps to join in. To provide the rest of the flow capacity needed for that. Yes, the worst case scenario, but it's, it's, it's a way to, what's a way to tackle the, the problem, if you will. To, to be able to meet those, those kind of demands. We're also doing this modeling throughout the distribution system inside and outside the lake. I got it on a future slide, but we're, we're looking at what, which ones of our existing water lines that we need to replace or increase or parallel from a capacity standpoint? Where, where do we have choke points with, with our current flows that may be limiting flows or limiting pressures within the system? So the modeling is ongoing on that right now to identify these future projects that will happen for us. And that, that's solely intended to improve water quality service to our existing customers. So on the, the last slide here, recent and future upgrades, we, we've been doing a lot here. I'm gonna highlight several. One of them is we just recently converted the gas chlorine disinfection system at the water plant to sodium hypochlorite. That's a safety standpoint. It's, it's, we were, we were using a hundred and fifty pound gas cylinders there. Those will be removed. We're feeding sodium hypochlorite, which if you think of bleach, that's, that's basically what it is. It's a liquid chlorine feed. It's much safer to use. It's easy to handle. And I wanted to get that gas chlorine feed out of there before we had an accident. And we had a gas release. It's near our neighborhood. We're downhill from it, so that, that's beneficial. But, um, you know, water systems across the country are looking at this and removing those types of things. It's a, it's a hazard. Terry's mentioned the lift station replacements that we've done, the, the tank at the wastewater plant and the INI. On, on the future side, we've already identified through our modeling that we're gonna replace the water main from the water plant to Jefferson Drive. We're gonna increase its capacity. That's for a number of reasons. One is for hydraulic flow. To make sure that what we're pumping out can go through there without any kind of water hammer situations happening with that. We don't want any flow restrictions occurring. And it'll increase our, our, assist with increasing water pressures within the system and reliability. When you have the, the water hammer that can be created through that line, pumping the, the volumes that go through it sometimes. It, it can cause other pipes nearby to, to crack and, and have a leak. So we're trying to increase reliability with that. I mentioned the hydraulic modeling and then the continued INI. With that, we've also got a wastewater project for the pre-treatment units to install some fine screening. We have, well, term core screening, it takes out the larger chunks of stuff that comes down. We're gonna try to refine that down to get some fine stuff. That'll help with the O and M and maintenance. And Terry mentioned our, our SCADA system, which is basically just a, they ought to look into the system from a remote computer. That's isolated. One of the things we're, we're very cautious about is cybersecurity. So these things are not tied to the internet. They're just tied into our system. We make sure that our vendors don't install backdoors to those. And while we can control certain things, other things we can just look at and it might raise an alarm to us before a, a problem happens at a system. And then we can dispatch a crew out to, to take care of it. And so we're in the process of not just at Lake Monachal, but across Virginia, install these SCADA systems and improving operations. And then we've had a lot of questions, but if there's any more.
Well, that and certainly you asking for an increase in customer service with future upgrades.
The, these future upgrades will be part of future rate increases, applications and requests to the State Corporation Commission who will determine, who they will, they determine, they set our rates for us. I haven't asked, they set the rates.
Yeah.
And they will determine whether or not these decisions for capital expenses were prudent, reasonable and providing a public benefit. If they're, if they don't meet those tests, they will not allow me to recover in rates.
With your bill, do you separate the sewage from water or it's all just one bill?
It's, it's, um, it's on, it's one bill. And it, and it shows line items, just like your, your telephone bill and other bills. There's line items that show what the, the components are for each one of those. Yes. And we do have some systems within the lake that have irrigation meters, where they're just pulling out a separate meter for, for water in your yard or a garden. It would, if they have one of those, it would show that. And at our last rate case, I decreased the cost of that to install it from fifteen hundred dollars to seven hundred and fifty. Hoping to encourage more, more folks to install a separate irrigation meter.
Do you get a lot of complaints about the billing from people?
As far as the cost?
Yes.
I won't say it's a lot. We, we do, we do receive them and we, and we respond to them and we explain them. A lot of times because people say it's, it's the water bill. Oh my goodness, it's just, that's why I'm paying for water. Some of the folks, they look at it, that's why I'm paying for water and wastewater combined. Depends on where they came from. You know, I've, I've got folks to who have moved in here and other utilities we have that are, are paying less here than they paid elsewhere. They're happy. Some are paying more here than they paid elsewhere. They're, they're less pleased with it, but they moved here for the, the rural environment. And I just, um, well, when we were at the Savannah Leadership Development Meeting, now there were two of our customers there and I'm walking in the parking lot, asking them probing questions. And they're like, you're a little higher, but you can't get what you have in Savannah County where I came from in New York.
That's a great comment.
And so they, they had that view of it. That that was what was important to them. And, and there's a lot of comparisons that happen with it.
This may be the dumbest question I've ever asked and you may have said something about it with the initials and everything else. But the biggest complaint that I've heard, and I went to Bridgewater College, every spring, you knew what it was gonna smell like for two weeks. That, that, that's the biggest complaint I get and I can tell you, that's part of my driving route that I do my test with the kids. And they're like, all right, all right, let's hurry up and get away.
I understand.
So I mean, what?
It's kinda like driving sixty, down sixty-four over the Ravanna River going into Charlottesville.
Bingo.
It's, it's very similar.
With the paper plant.
And that's not my plant, you know, it's just the nature of.
Like you said, we have residential communities that are right there just above it. What can we do? Is anything can be done to help? We're actually looking at that. There's, there's, you know, there's a couple of areas within the facility. It is not necessarily indicative of poor operation. It's what you're dealing with. But we've got sewer, we've got, you know, sewer lines and they're very lengthy. And so when it enters into the wastewater plants, you got hydrogen sulfide coming off or whatever the case. That's, that's one issue. The other is we treat solids, we dewater solids, bio solids and we use a centrifuge. And I'll be honest with you, the centrifuge has, has a distinct odor to it. And it's different than what you smell walking around the rest of the plant. A lot of facilities will put out these perfumers, if you will, around the perimeter, make it smell better. It is, I would rather smell the other than the perfume. It is a problem. It is a problem and it, it's dependent on the time of the year. Summertime is bad. If you have an inversion, it's bad. And it, if the wind is going in one direction or another, it's bad. But we are looking at that. We did try even around the centrifuge area, putting up these aromatic socks. Didn't know whether it worked or not, but we didn't, we didn't get as many complaints or maybe it does. And I've, I've had our operator look at that. Can you do it again? Let's see what impact it does have. That's the biggest complaint that I've heard because I don't have a dog in my, my district.
No, it, it is a concern. It's a tough one to solve. One of the things I want to look at is we, we move more and more into the SCADA controls within the lake and, and at the lift stations. Can, can we do some study and analysis of our flow coming into those, those lift stations? How long are we holding that flow? Where maybe it's gonna go anaerobic and you get that hydrogen sulfide smell? Is there a way that we can, can come in with some, maybe change over to variable speed pumps or flow controls? That doesn't allow it to sit there as long? Cause we know when, when there's a lot of volume coming in, it turns over fast. Okay, but, but in the middle of the day, when there's a little bit of volume coming in, it can sit there. Are we getting solids deposition? And I think as we get more SCADA controls out there, we can look at that. We have at some other lift stations that were much smaller and we, we sorted did it as a, a little pile to see how it worked. I think it was effective. We put some aeration in it. To keep solids in suspension, so that would move out and wouldn't settle to the bottom of, of the lift stations. That could be a possibility, but then that's also a conflict. If some of the, where they're right in the residential areas. Putting a little iteration system in there, I could create a different problem than we're trying to solve. And I think as we get more into SCADA, we can, we can look at, at fine tuning.
And, and it, so you, you all, how many sewer plants you said?
We have eight.
Okay.
Lake Monachal is our largest.
And of those are, are all eight experiencing the same smell issues?
I, I've been working with wastewater plants since nineteen eighty-one. Every one of them smells.
You, you'd say comparable to Lake Monachal?
Yes.
Okay.
It's just the nature of the material. I've, I've waited for it. Wouldn't have been a good night if you hadn't.
Thank you all so much. Is there any other question?
Yes, um, so there, there was a letter. Terry, I think it came from you.
Back in February.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
I apologize. I gotta, I had it pulled up here and now I can't find it. Here it is. And I just, you know, a lot of it's great to me. I don't, not in the business. And it's from February sixteenth, the day we had, I think the day we had the board meeting on, on Village Oaks. And it came in that afternoon to staff. From my understanding, it says this letter, it was to the gentleman with Secave Solutions, the, the architect.
Yes.
This letter is in reference to fire flow requirements for the proposed Bill Joke Senior Living Complex. Stated in your letter dated so and so to Douglas Miles. The International Fire Code requires a flow rate of fifteen hundred gallons per minute for two hour duration. It's our understanding that the proposed automatic sprinkler system demand includes hose stream equates including hose stream equates to flow approximately three hundred and thirty gallons per minute. Previous modeling activities performed by Aqua indicate that we could provide one thousand two hundred and thirty gallons per minute while maintaining, maintaining twelve hundred PSI in our system. And I don't know if it's important to go and read in the rest of it.
No.
So I'm, I'm trying to understand.
Lot of change.
Yeah, we, I mean, what does that mean? That capacity is at twelve thirty, but it's asking for, it requires fifteen hundred and all those things.
Sure. I mean, the, 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 the code requirements that we're, that we were giving, it develops fifteen hundred gallons a minute of flow. The initial modeling said we could do twelve thirty. Subsequent modeling, there was a different number there that said what we could do. Or the twelve thirty with that. That was the correction. That, that was the correction. So all we're showing is that fifteen hundred was the gallons per minute requirement. We could do twelve thirty. That delta of two hundred and seventy gallons in that was gonna have to be included within the design of a water system to serve that facility.
So the developer would have to add stuff that would get it. And you were just saying, you weren't saying that the capacity couldn't be there. You're just saying that the developer is gonna had, have to add infrastructure to get it to fifteen hundred. Is that?
Correct.
Is that accurate?
Fifteen hundred gallons minute instantaneous flow rate for that period of time.
And that's really.
And that was really kind of like a worst case scenario. If a fire occurred, you want to be able to make sure you have that fifteen hundred.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly. We we could provide twelve thirty of that.
Yeah.
Or twelve seventy where that number was.
And so wasn't saying not, you know, hey, you need to know, we can't get.
We couldn't do it. Yes and no. We couldn't do it without that additional storage and pumps by the developer for that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
And and so at night, with the whole ten to twelve hour, is that that letter goes on to speak to um, it doesn't operate twenty-four hours treatment plan currently operates between ten and twelve hours a day. As a result, the pressure available to the proposed complex during non operational hours at the treatment plant will be lower. Does was that suggesting concern for, let's say it's midnight?
Yeah.
Does that, is that just saying that, hey, they also have to include infrastructure that will?
Well, that that number of twelve thirty or twelve seventy was the the midnight consideration when the water plant's not running.
Okay.
Okay. If it if it was eight o'clock in the morning, that'd be a different number. But that that's where I went when when I spoke with our modeler. I said, here here is how we're running as we got we got for these fire flows, we we have to be worst case.
I see.
Most conservative.
Okay.
So let's turn the water plant off as a contributing flow. And what's our number? And that's what prompted that letter.
I got you. Thank you. And I think I have one more. I think for now, it's all been answered. And I'll, there's a couple more I'll have, but I'll reach out to you all from the side.
Sure, absolutely.
Miss Edgar, did you have anything? Thank you. Really nice foot faces with.
No, we really appreciate the opportunity to have more of an in-depth conversation because you know, there's times I'm sort of here for a quick two minutes to 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 chime in on something.
Correct.
I think this is more productive. That's why I started out by saying, I hope we can do this again. I'll end up the the same way. And now you've had more of an overview of us. Um, you know, another time we we can focus in more maybe on a topic.
Yeah, we can, we can try.
Mr. O'Brien, who represents most of the folks at Chelsea.
Yeah, no.
Not here, but this way, way it worked out.
Yeah. And Mr. Doll has our has my contact information. Um, I've got you alls. I can pass it out. I'll pass out my cell number to you. Um, I mean, I can sit down for lunch with you. And if you just have general topics about what we're doing, I'd be glad to share that with you.
Thank you all so much. Appreciate you. All right. Next up is the consent agenda. E minutes of April twentieth, twenty twenty-two. F F Y twenty-three, CSA provider agreement, Mr. Moller. G procurement policy update, Mr. Doll. H C R M F grinding of additional storm damage brush, Mr. Kreiter. And I position description for human resources generalist, Miss Snow. Is there anything we want to pull?
I just have a comment.
Okay.
I think this is on the minutes. Where we have that resolution for Tyler, the Eagle Scout. What's in here is Jacob. Got it? Okay.
Oh, okay. Good catch. Anyone else? Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the consent agenda with the correction of the name in the minutes.
You have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Miss Booker. Second by Miss Edgar, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Chair of both I. We now have, do we have any unfinished business? It'd be a bad time to talk about it without Mr. O'Brien being here anyway. Um, okay, how about any new business? All right. Hearing none or hearing none, I will now move to the second round of public comments. Anyone wish to address the board, please state your name, address, first up to the microphone. And keep your comments to five minutes on topic and directed to the board. Is anyone wish to speak at this time? Seeing none, how about Ms. Harris, Mr. Doll? Having none online, I'll now close the second round of public comment. Mr. Fairchild, that's why I got the yellow book, do you?
That's your time, that's a sunglasses, lights or something. So and then each one I read off the section number and so on before.
The man beside you to your right can help you better with that.
Is that correct? That read the section.
That's either been Mr. Weaver or Mr. O'Brien. I've never had that.
Mr. Chair, I move the Savannah County Board of Supervisors enter into a closed meeting pursuant to provisions of section two point two dash three seven one one A dot one, personal personnel matters. And go ahead and define what the personal matters, the discussion, consideration and interviews of.
Uh, no, I think you.
Just personnel matters, I think.
Yeah, personnel matters i- is you're not, you're not required to identify.
Section two point two dash three seven one one A dot seven litigation. Uh, personnel, employee resignations, litigation. Actual lit.
With respect to litigation, it 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 refers to the Zion Crossroads water and sewer plant.
Yeah.
Water and sewer project.
What he said.
Second, second.
Fairchild, second by Miss Booker. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Chair of both I. Most best four zero one. We are now in both sessions.
Like clearing their dash.
Yeah.
I know, maybe come into the office.
That's, that's what I was gonna say, I want you to come in there.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, other than, and I, whatever everybody, anybody else did, they weren't sitting beside me when I tried to do it. And so, God bless them, but.
What is she trying to do?
This.
Yeah, maybe, maybe if you get a, maybe if you get a day, we'll just set up a laptop in the moorish room or something like that.
Also established that everybody else had troubles too.
Yeah.
So.
Oh, yeah.
Cash and it's gonna take a while, but it'll.
I did it.
It was a pain.
So, I'm, I don't wanna, to tell you the truth, I don't wanna go through it anymore. I'm gonna come into offices.
Yeah.
Have a computer that'll do it, and otherwise, let's just not talk about it anymore, and the state can deal with it from there.
Cause it was a pain.
Yeah, I'm not, it's, it's enough.
Mr. Fairchild, I got ready to say, Mr. O'Brien.
Mr. Weaver.
You have to read it.
Weaver.
You have to read.
You gotta read the yellow thing, you gotta put it back instead.
Where? Let me see.
It's on your back, I think. This one?
Exit closed. Yes.
All matters discussed.
We do that in meetings.
Mr. Chair, I move the closed meeting, the adjourned, and the Savannah County Board of Supervisors convene again in open session. Be resolved, the Board of Supervisors does hereby certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under section 2.2 dash 3711 dash A of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended, and to only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Yeah, motion made by Mr. Fairchild, seconded by Ms. Booker, Ms. Eager.
Aye.
Ms. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Fairchild. Chair votes aye, motion passes 401, Mr. O'Brien absent, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So, move. Chris.
Second. Second.
Motion made by Ms. Booker, seconded by Mr. Fairchild, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, chair votes aye, motion passes 401.